All to order, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
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 Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. McIrvin?
Here.
Ms. Witchy?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thanks, Megan. First item on the agenda tonight is a special presentation by Reverend Linda Smith and our Police Chief Ed Van Bailey, except it looks like he's lost on a computer screen.
(laughing) Get stuff straightened out here. Okay. I'm sorry. Good evening, Council President Prince, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, it's okay. Just take your time, not a problem.
(laughing) Sorry about that. I'm here just really quick to kind of talk about an event that we had, November 8th. It was called the Unity Forum. I was joined with my co-chair, Dr. Linda Smith, who's here. We're just going to go over some highlights of what happened during the Unity Forum. It was held at Cry Out -- is Christopher here? Nope. Okay. It was held at Harambe with the Cry Out Organization. We had twenty young adults there and some adults there. We wanted to talk about some of the tensions and things that are going on in the Police Department, some education pieces. Quite often, we're asked certain questions from law enforcement about our training, defensive tactics, why do we do certain things, and this was an opportunity for us to sit down with them and kind of go over, you know, the training that we get, the decisions we make, and what goes through our head. Sergeant Christine Matthews, about a month before this, we talked with her about maybe doing some kind of educational video that sparks some conversation. And so I'm going to play that for you now. It was really big and a blockbuster in my head, but it turns out to be a three-minute video that just kind of illustrates what's going on through an officer's head through routine call, the interaction, and to spark some conversation. So I'll play that now and then we'll answer some questions.
Renton Officers 1 Robert 12 and 1 Robert 13 are dispatched to a possible burglary in progress. The reporting party tells the dispatcher that there are two suspects, one male and one female. The male is described as a black male, sixteen to eighteen years old, and is wearing dark clothes, carrying a blue backpack. The female is described as a white female, sixteen to eighteen years old, with long dark hair, and is also carrying a backpack. Additionally, the reporting party tells the dispatcher that there have been a rash of burglaries and male thefts in the area recently. The caller says they can see the two suspects. They are inside the carport of the neighbor's house, looking over the fence and trying to get into the backyard. The homeowner is not currently home.
Can you see anything?
No, nothing.
(inaudible)
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 1 Robert 12, copy.
1 Robert 13, en route.
Wow, this is like the third call to this neighborhood in a few days. I wonder what's going on? I better slow down. I'm coming in the area, and I want to park right in front of the house for safety. I better wait for my backup to get here.
Still, it's not a way in either.
Hey, what are you guys doing?
We're not doing anything.
Go ahead and come out here, I need to talk to you.
Yeah, can't see their hands. Watch their hands, watch hands.
Yeah.
What are you guys doing?
We just heard that there was this Siberian Husky hybrid thing, and we just wanted to see it.
Yeah. Have them put their backpacks down. They may have access to a weapon. Yeah, I'll just have them set it down.
No?
No, not at all.
It's going to poke these dead ones?
(inaudible)
Officer Nugent, I'm with the Renton Police. The reason why we're here today is we got a call from the neighbors over here.
Like we said, we didn't do anything though, so...
Just let me explain, guys. So we've had a string of burglaries here, some male theft, and the neighbors are just looking out for the neighborhood, and they saw you guys on property, and they know the homeowners, and they know you don't belong here.
Okay, I better have my backup run the names, just in case they have any prior incidents.
We can go from there, okay? You're just not free to leave at this point, but you're not in any kind of trouble yet, okay? Does that make sense?
Yeah, man.
We didn't do anything.
Okay, partner, would you mind checking with the reporting party?
Sure.
And see what they saw here. Okay, so my partner's going to go check with your reporting party and see what's going on, okay? As soon as we figure that all out, we'll either get you guys on your way, or we'll figure out next steps, okay?
Sounds good.
So we got a chance to talk to the person who called and the homeowner. So it turns out they don't want to do anything, they didn't see you guys commit any crimes or anything like that. So this is just kind of a chance for us to talk to you guys about staying off people's property. Technically, this is trespassing, but since they don't want to do anything about it, they're just asking that you guys be informed and let go, okay? So don't go back on the property and have a good day, okay? Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Make sure you cooperate.
Okay, so the video was really just to illustrate a common call that we might get during the day and the interactions that we have. And this was sparked by an idea that Dr. Linda and I had about oftentimes calls come in and, you know, sometimes there's people of color, minorities are in a certain neighborhood where they wonder why the police are called, why are they coming if there's such an innocent activity taking place? So we really wanted to capture the perspectives and have a conversation about that. And that's exactly what it did. We showed the video, of course, the conversation stretched into many other things as far as law enforcement. But we had several officers, we had my whole command staff that was there to kind of hear what was some of the perspectives and things that were happening and some of the questions they might have to answer those. But we recorded with the help of Benita some of the questions and comments that they had, that the officers -- and it lasted for just over an hour as far as the questions, but they had certain questions. Why would the police tell people that they cannot leave, which is a really common question? What authority do we have to keep somebody there? What are the procedures to search, pat and frisk individuals? As you can see, they were searched. And one of the real key things that came out of that particular video that they noticed is the male subject had his hands put behind his back where the female just kind of stood there with her hands down. And when the question was asked of the participants, well, what would be the safest way to actually pat somebody down? And they said, well, the way they did it with the male. And I said, that's correct. Oftentimes, officers are afraid to pat down a female just because of being a different gender, so they'll relax their standards. So they were picking out certain things that we really wanted them to concentrate on, and as well as some of the questions that they had. Why do they have to run our names? And the answer to that is if they have any previous history, or they've been there before and are not allowed, we run names through our local, you know, records, and it comes back and lets us know, you know, that they're not supposed to be there. One of the surprises you always like to hear as question and answers as far as how we do business was the interactions that they all said that they've had with the Renton Police Department specifically and how positive they were. And one of the comments we had was from a mother. "As a resident, I'm concerned about our ability to continue to attract good people to this department." But also said, "I wish, you know, all officers could be the same as they are in Renton." So that's one of those things that's nice to hear, and we talk about the recruiting potentials and the problems that we might have, and any suggestions they might have on how we get into certain communities, so. So we have two pages worth of questions, and typically we'll go through those questions, we answer those, and we publish them again. We'll push those back out so people can see what kind of questions were asked. (laughing) I'm going to go through the pictures. We just have a series of pictures that were taken during that, during the event.
So the chief and I actually had a really good engagement this past summer with a young African-American man who the police had been called on in the middle of the night, and it was really pretty upsetting for him. And he talked to his pastor, and his pastor contacted me, and I contacted -- he wasn't the chief at that point, but we got together, we met with him, his pastor, and his family. And that really was just a tremendous outcome for a wonderful young man who was in college. So that was really just another way of building relationships. And I think throughout this entire dialogue that we've had is about building relationships, trusting each other. One of the things that we heard that the parents of color was fearful of police when their children are stopped, particularly at night. One of the things I think that came forth was consistency in the actions by our Police Department regardless of color. And people were really just interested in what I think every citizen is interested in, is how to be safe, mental health issues, and how the police are dealing with that and what kind of training and things they're getting. There also was some dialogue around awareness of police process and protocol, and I think there was a lot of good discussion around that, particularly around pat and frisk and social contacts. That was pretty good information. But it was really, I thought, a very engaging conversation and dialogue within the community, and I think it's just really another way for us to continue to improve and increase our relationship. And again, as the chief said, we got a lot of really, really positive comments about our Police Department here in the city of Renton, so.
So from here, we -- this started as a unity march that we've done the last two years, and we had spoke about walking, not doing a lot of talking, so this was a change to actually sit down and engage some folks. And we were lucky enough to have Christopher give us that environment and the students that he has. So we plan on doing a lot more of these, it's just finding the right venue. But in each of these, we're going to publish our results on the webpage, our Facebook and things to just kind of talk about that, start the conversation, so. Pending your questions, that's all we have.
Any questions from council? I just want to make one quick comment, and that is, this effort through the Renton African-American Pastors Group, excuse me, to bridge these communication gaps and to build relationships has been tremendous, and especially under your leadership, Dr. Smith, it's been, it's just been really good for the police, it's been good for the community. We can't thank you enough for all the work that you do, helping us through this process, so. And it is a process.
Yeah.
So it's something we continue to do, so. Thank you very much. Thanks for the update. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
All right, administrative report, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Two items this evening. First, an inclement weather response reminder. The Public Works Department would like to remind residents to help us prevent local residential street flooding by monitoring catch basins near your home and keeping them clear of leaves and other debris. And street sweepers are dispatched daily to clean up debris along major arterials, but those catch basins can quickly get filled with leaves and then cause local flooding. The other item is be sure to include the spectacular clam lights, holiday lights displayed in your holiday list of must-dos this season. The clam lights run nightly from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. through January 1st. This year's lights display features 200,000 lights, turning Jean Coolan Memorial Beach Park into a winter wonderland, perfect for holiday photos or leisurely strolls along the shores of Lake Washington. Hope to see you there.
Thank you, Bob. Never gets old, does it?
Nice.
Okay, audience comments. We have several people here to talk about the airport, so. If I call your name, please come to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes. Marcy Palmer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Ironic that I am before you this evening. My very first council meeting was back in early 2000. Councilmember Corman and councilmember Person, we're up there, probably not in the same seats, but I don't remember. And it was about an airport issue, where this room was packed, an adjacent conference room, and the conferencing center. And it's interesting, that was a lot of community concern about the airport and a potential new business going in. And for those of you that don't remember, you'll get a kick out of it. It was about a potential business jet, business. And the community was concerned, but really what it boiled down to was that there was no plan for the Renton Airport. And there was a lot of neighborhood distress and frustration because there was no plan, and the neighbors were being inundated with airplane noise. I came as a concerned Kenneadel resident because I guess I was the most vocal, crankiest Kenneadel resident about the airplane noise over my house. I was sure there was an X on my roof showing the pilots where to turn and come over and rev their engines. There wasn't, I have learned. So tonight, we're here because you have on your consent agenda an item from RAC, Renton Airport Advisory Committee, which was created by Mayor Tanner out of that meeting, when he realized how much community concern, and there was no vehicle, for neighbors, businesses, airport interests to communicate with the city government. And what a wise man he was. Brought all those parties together, starting in May 2001, and I am one of the original members. I am no longer a voting member, but I'm still a really concerned and interested community partner. So tonight, what my points are, is I'm not going to advise you on which of the alternatives you have been recommended by the administration. Out of the three that were presented to RAC at a specially-called meeting, alternatives four, five, and six. And a vote was taken. The majority of the RAC members, who have spent four years getting down in the weeds of learning the details and reading all the information and going to extra meetings and spending extra hours, the vote by those people was for alternative four. There were a few votes for alternative six and none for alternative five, which is what's being advised. I'm not here to tell you which is the best, because to be honest with you, once the process with the FAA and all the studies, which is a multi-year process, takes place, I don't think it's going to look exactly like any one of the six or the three that were presented. There's, it's fluid. There's a lot of unknowns. What I would like to ask is the same thing I asked back in the early 2000, is the council and the city administration would listen to the community, to the RAC members who have taken the time over four years to learn and to let them know they're being heard. RAC was heavily engaged. We did have extra meetings and extra time. And the end part, the delay, everyone that is involved acknowledges that was on the FAA. It was really two years of delay on the FAA's part, because this is a really complicated little airport. And where we are now is we're in a good place, but there's still a lot of unknowns. And I would just ask that all of you and the city administration listen to the RAC members who have invested their time, many for the same nineteen years that I have, to the airport interests and to the businesses that feel like they don't really know what's going on. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Warren Hendrickson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow city council members. My name is Warren Hendrickson, I'm from Gig Harbor, Washington. My role is on the Northwest Mountain Regional Manager for the Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association, AOPA. AOPA is the world's largest general aviation organization, and I am the direct field representative for seven states, from Colorado to the Pacific coast. I serve 30,000 members, 10,000 in Washington State, and 466 of your constituents here at the Renton Airport. I am here at their request this evening. I am all about openness, inclusion, stakeholders, and reliance on input. That is how I operate, that is how I do the roles. My background, for your own edification, I was a Pierce County Airport Planner. I personally was the project manager for the Tacoma Narrows Master Plan Update in 2012, 2013. I was previously the Washington Airport Management Association Executive Director, serving 136 public use airports in this state, and I've been in my current position, serving airport support and legislative advocacy for over three years. Currently, I serve over 645 public use airports, 346 of which receive federal funding. So with that, I have three points I would like to make to you tonight. The first is with regard to the Renton Airport Advisory Committee. You have the second-largest seaplane base in the world. That base is going to be significantly impacted by the decisions you make on this alternative options, the preferred alternative for the master plan update. Yet, your RAC has no designated Washington Seaplane Pilots Association representative. That is a huge deficiency, particularly in the situation where you have right now that has to be corrected. And that would require a minor amendment to the RAC makeup that is certainly within your power to do so. My second two points are really the ones that brought me here tonight, even more importantly. Of all the airports I work with, of all the master plans I have done, the prize for the poorest and lowest level of public involvement in a master plan update belongs unfortunately and regrettably to the city of Renton. I have to be directly honest. At the Transportation Committee earlier this evening, it was talked about how important it is to get public input as we revise, as we look at this preferred alternative. This master plan has been going on for over four years. This process, this public process, should have started four years ago. There is nothing available on the city of Renton's website with regard to specific documents. Even discovering that the RAC had been appointed by you, this council, as the Planning Advisory Committee, charged with the responsibility of making the recommendations to you, that information was only learned by me by a direct, one-on-one conversation with your hired consultant, Ryan Hayes. It's not available on the website. This is an amazing situation, and I have not seen it anywhere before, and I just have to let you know about it. It's hard to correct now, but we need to take this into account for when we go further. Lastly, the most disappointing aspect is the fact that, as Ms. Palmer just mentioned to you, not a single member of the RAC voted for alternative five. Yet, Public Works and airport staff report and recommendation to the Transportation Committee and to you is that alternative five be selected. You look at the body of that report, nowhere in that report does it show the actual votes. Whether there was a quorum or not at that October 16th meeting is an important. The recommendation was clear, and there was not a single vote for alternative five, and there's very good reasons for that. If, in fact, airport staff and Public Works are going to disagree with that, then be publicly open, transparent, no sutterfuge. Explain your justification for going against the recommendation of the body that you have hired to provide that recommendation to you. Tough words, not a pretty story, but thank you for your listening.
Good, thank you. Next to Diane Pehulke.
Hi, my name is Diane Pehulke, and I have, do I have to give my address?
No, we know you're a Renton business.
Okay, okay. The reason I'm here is to discuss about the RAC master plan, and we went to the Transportation Committee meeting today. First off, I also went to, I'm no longer a RAC member, but I went to all the RAC meetings and the subcommittee meetings and everything. And I was a little disappointed too, when I got the notice on Friday that the airport management was recommending alternate five, when we did all those meetings and all those extras, you know, meetings and explaining all that, and then it was never even mentioned in the report to the Transportation Committee today about how the RAC had voted or what the RAC members had felt. And in addition to that, I think we would have, everybody would have been open to looking again at number five, but we don't really have an explanation as to why they decided to go with five versus four or six, and we were asked for our input. And they asked everybody, does not RAC member say, I'll give that to the airport manager? They sent somebody around to all the businesses, all of that. But I don't really understand why they picked five versus four or six after we had gone through each of those plans by hour, by hour. The second point that I have is all three of the plans call for moving the river, you know, a quarter mile one way or the other. And I've called everybody that I know of in the FAA, in Washington DC and stuff, and, you know, who's going to pay for moving that river? That's a huge part of it, and it's only moving a very short distance. And I think Mr. Pearson hit the nail on the head today at the Transportation Committee meeting, that this isn't going to look anything like this. Is there any way that we could have a plan, like if we, you know, if the FAA doesn't sign off on moving the river or want to give us grants for that, what it's going to look like without that? I think that would be more realistic, and then we could really contribute and help. You know, I mean, it's like the pie in the sky, what these plans are. And I think we all realistically know it's not going to look like that, but could we start with something a little bit more realistic and then we could know? Because as a business owner and other business owners, they're very afraid of like what happened last time, when we, they said, okay, you don't have to do, we're not going to approve the stuff on the east side, and so it moved everything on the west side, and we all lost a shave of property along the way. So whether or not you pass, the airport didn't lose any property, but the taxi lane and the driveline got moved, which moved them closer to the buildings, okay? So that cut down on our parking area, and that's what the businesses are afraid of, okay? So we've got this pie in the sky, moving the river, and, I mean, to actually do that, but if we don't get that, then what happens? Then, do you see what I'm saying, which would be a more realistic plan? And it just, I just think we've, I would prefer to see some of what's really, what could possibly happen. And, you know, maybe we can contribute more, the business owners and the RAC members of other suggestions, things like that. And I just would like to say that I was very impressed this whole last year, the citizens and the airport people on the RAC going to all those meetings, extra meetings, coming in and having groups at our place or different places. So the RAC members really put in a lot to this, and I just think that that was really great, and I think it's turned into a great working relationship with the airport people and the citizens and try to make something for everybody's happy. But I think, you know, as far as myself and a few other business members, we'd like to work with the RAC on a realistic plan. You know what I'm saying? So, okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Were there any more?
Yeah, I got one more.
Okay.
Want to wait?
Maybe I can wait to make my comments.
Okay, Marlene Mount? Marlene, did you, did you have?
(inaudible)
Okay, well, I was going to go ahead and let Randy Corman speak on this issue, if you'd like.
I would just like to clarify, I'm sure the council's a little bit confused, and we did have a Transportation Committee meeting on this topic. We actually had it on the agenda, proposed report that was provided to us to, out of the ten different alternatives that had been studied, and I think kind of narrowed down to six, and then as was correctly reported tonight, the RAC had looked at a few of the finalists and had a vote. The report from staff was recommending that we identify alternative five as our preferred alternative. Don and I were the two members that were in the committee tonight, and we did, we decided that we should hold that report for another week because there was clearly a lot of citizen interest, and we'd had some questions, and we knew you all might have questions, and clearly the public has questions about that. But I also just wanted to, for the benefit of the council and for the people that are here tonight, and even the people that might be viewing on television, just sort of provide a little bit of context. So this, of course, is the safety master plan. The FAA is just taking a big step back. The FAA has said that we're operating outside of sort of established safety protocols at the airport. They want us to show good intent, that we're trying to work it into proper safety protocols. We can continue operating as long as we're going through a process to try and remedy that. And so that process has us looking at different ways that we can add some EMAS structures that are basically zones where if your airplane overruns, it would stop you, the same as where we've seen truck, runaway truck things with gravel, and it would stop an airplane the same way. However, because airplanes generate a whole lot of wind, you have to have like a thin concrete on top of these that can, you know, cave in if the airplane rolls on it. So we're trying to figure out how to fit those in and still keep the airport length that we need to be able to take off Boeing aircraft from that airport. So the different proposals have, to just sort of simplify it, an extension into the lake, another... Another option is an extension into downtown, right up to the Renton High School field. And when this went before the RAC, there was a vote. Somebody made a very astute comment on the RAC. Oh, one of the proposals, their Alternative 5 actually does a little bit of each, at both ends. Somebody made the astute comment, which I have to say, you know, it made a lot of sense. They go, wow, if you do Alternative 5, you're actually doing double the work because you have all the impacts of going into the lake and dealing with fisheries and all that stuff, plus all the impacts of going into downtown and impacting the school and all that stuff. So their thought was a more practical one. The RAC, while there wasn't a quorum, the majority view was that it should push into downtown. Of course, you know, they're the closest to it. I strongly, we all value, as has been said, their input. They're major stakeholders in this. Of course, the downtown, the people that own the downtown property are also stakeholders. And so since it's possible that if we push into downtown, there's more than just voluntary people selling their property, there might end up being takings of property. When I saw the staff proposal tonight, that actually the preferred alternative was looking at the lake and looking at downtown, I'm going to say my initial reaction was, well, that's probably good because by looking at the lake, we can actually figure out how viable that even is before we start talking about having to push into downtown, which might end up taking people's property. So just from a standpoint of, when you do an environmental impacts review, you look at all the impacts surrounding all the elements, and then you come up with a final decision that, you know, you're trying to bracket it with the proposal. And we were told that the environmental review will actually look at not just the preferred alternative, but actually all 10 of the different alternatives that have been looked at. Okay, so what are we, you know, why are we trying to press on now? Well, apparently there's a grant that we could get that the FAA has earmarked to help us perform the study, which I don't have the exact number, but it's something like a half million dollars of staff scientific review capability that would be ours if we can put forward the master plan with its preferred alternative before the end of this year. And so if we had that, we could actually start, we'd start the phase where we would start getting science behind it. It would be more than just our own staff trying to bring proposals forward. It would actually be teams of scientists looking at, as well as engaging the FAA, figuring out, does the river really need to move? If so, what does that mean? Is it hundreds of thousands? Is it tens of millions? You know, that kind of thing. We think it would be like a three-year process. We think that grant money would sort of kickstart that phase. If we chose to sort of delay and not take any action, I think there's some concern that we'll be into next year and we won't, we'll start spending the money trying to get another grant, spending the time. But that's where we are. I think, in summary, I want to say the most important thing we can do is make sure that all the stakeholders feel like they're being heard and that we're considering their inputs. Definitely, the airport personnel, the people that are working to make that a viable airport, they're doing business there, are the primary interest in this case. We also need to be sensitive to the business owners and the school and the other community stakeholders. So anyways, we're going to, we're going to hold that report for a week. I promise that even if it went through the council next week and we made that a preferred alternative, that I would be completely open-minded. I have no idea what this is going to end up looking like. It may be 15 or 20 years before we actually see any dirt turned on that airport to do any of this stuff. But that's kind of where we are. I hope that provides some context, and I hope we can still keep the community as engaged productively as they have been.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
Randy, thank you for that synopsis of what happened in transportation today. I appreciate that. I think for me, as someone who came to this council after serving on a board or commission, the important thing for me is that if the RAC, with or without quorum, made a recommendation, and staff went against that recommendation, that there was some communication as to why they went against that recommendation. So I hope that since you guys are holding this report for a week, there'll be some time for RAC and the airport staff and Public Works to come together and have a conversation about what's going on.
Good suggestion, yeah. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, if I could ask, could staff furnish us with a memo that could be provided to the RAC to explain?
Yeah.
Yes, we can.
Yeah, that would be good. And then we can discuss that further next week, and people could comment on it via email during the week if they chose.
Okay, all right, we can do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Ed, for picking up on that.
And then getting back, Marlene, did you want to still speak?
I'd like to change, I'd like to defer to Warren Hedrickson by five minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Corman, I really appreciate that, and I appreciated your attendance too at the RAC meeting on October 16th as well. I did participate in the September 24th committee, the whole, some of you may remember my face along the wall. A couple of comments I wanted to make, just so that we're all clear on the terms and the definitions. Actually, with all due respect, sir, you mix the numbers and what the alternatives are. Alternative 4, of the three options that are out there, Alternative 4 moves basically the airport to the south across Airport Way. Alternative 5 moves it to the north into the lake. Alternative 6 is the hybrid option that utilizes both. Okay, so if you hear the numbers 4, 5, and 6, okay, it's important because Alternative 5 is, and why I make that distinction, is Alternative 5 is the one that's highlighted as the staff and Public Works recommendation to you. And Alternative 5 moves everything to the north into the lake, preserving Airport Way in its current position. That's an important distinction. And this is not really about what ultimately gets built or what choice the council makes, really, because obviously there's political constraints, you know? There's a reason to move, or at least attempt to move, the airport into the lake and preserve Airport Way, you know? The obvious impacts on the community speak for themselves, no less the mitigation on the athletic fields and the high school location, and, you know, I mean, it's substantial. I mean, you have a very tough decision for you. But a couple of other thoughts. When you select that preferred alternative, it is one of only two parts of the entire master plan that are approved by the FAA. The first one is the forecast. So the master plan process is, what have you have today? What's your inventory? Two, what's the forecast? What do we need to think about providing now and into the future? And the third one is the needs, which then leads to those 10 alternatives which eventually get narrowed down to the top choice. That's the process. And so where we are right now is selecting that preferred alternative. We're in the end game. So when you select that preferred alternative, you are telling, and the FAA is approving, that this is what your plan is for the airport. It is what you intend to implement, not the other 10, not the no action, this is what you intend to do. Because for federal funding to take place, nothing happens unless it is on the airport layout plan, which is what your preferred alternative is going to drive. If it's not on the airport plan, it doesn't happen. End of story, the FAA say, it's not there, you're done. You have two choices, either a new master plan process, and here we've already been four years into this one, or get a pen and ink change to amend the airport layout plan. That's another convoluted process. So make no mistake, it's not a question of, this is the beginning of the dialogue. No, this is a choice, because you're saying that this is what this city intends to do with this airport over the next several years. And in terms of deadlines, the grant funding for a master plan, typically, to give you an idea, a master plan takes 18 months to two years. We're four years into this. Now, it's unusual, but given the change in the aircraft, airport design standards, going from single-engine light aircraft to a 737, because Boeing's output, their capacity, their manufacturing, and the number of operations dictated that, all these numbers in the airport standards changed, you know, it's not unreasonable to see that the master plan took a long time. And the RAC has devoted incredible resources into this effort, and they made a very, very wise choice, and with no real great, one perfect answer. They really assessed it, and to have that understanding. So there is no artificial deadline, the process takes what it takes because it's more important, and the FAA recognizes, to come up with the best possible conclusion than to reach some artificial deadline. So I don't want anybody to feel that they're under some kind of certain constraint here of time to get things done. So, and the FAA will work with you to carry those funds over year over year to go ahead and get that done. The other part of it, when you figure cost considerations, is although the FAA will provide 90%, and typically they say that means 10% of whatever the final choice is, is based upon what they call local match, remember too that Washington State DOT Aviation has a big chunk of that, and they can devote up to 5% of your local match. So the city of Renton, under the most perfect conditions, would only have to pay 5% of the total, not 10%. And again, it's just facts and data, I want to make sure you have the right information. And as I've told Harry and I've told Greg, you know, I am available as a resource to you at any time. That's my job, is I do airport support through seven states, and if I can be a resource to help you make a better decision, to get the public better involved, even if you have to table this down the road a little bit, I'd be happy to do that.
Great, really appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, and so I might have got the nomenclature mixed up with the proposal numbers, but I did want to say that the staff proposal that Don and I looked at tonight, I think it was the Alternative 5, it actually did have quite a bit of property acquisition on the south side of the airport, including, I think, if I remember right, the playfield at the Renton High School. So that was a runway protection zone. We had quite a bit of discussion about the, you know, I was asking questions, well, why would you be required to procure all this property south of the airport if we're keeping Airport Way open? And the answer was that if there were an incident with an aircraft where it landed short of the runway, they don't want, they don't want people there or businesses there or anything that sort of makes the accident worse. And so there is a very large, this proposal includes a purchasing, this hybrid one that also goes into the lake includes a very large purchasing procurement of a property that's currently private property and school district property and turning it into airport property. And unfortunately, another detail of that is it's a, it becomes property that's kind of stay-out property too, that the city, we sort of lose it in our inventory of recreation property. It's, it could be landscaped, but you can't really do anything on it. So with the other proposals, that actually pushes further south, almost all the way to, basically to Second Street. So it's, you know, it's impacting the whole city. There's definitely going to be losses that go with this, no matter what we do. But I still, I accept the points that were made about how important it is to get this right and include everybody in the process.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, we have seven items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member liked pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move that the council concur in the consent agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Pavoni, that the consent agenda be accepted as published. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nice to have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Prince.
Yes, the committee whole has a committee report.
This committee report is regarding the agreement between Southport West LLC and the city of Renton regarding the Park Avenue North Extension and the private road. The committee of the whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the agreement between Southport West LLC and the city of Renton regarding the Park Avenue North Extension and the private road accessing the Southport property, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement. This is signed by the council president.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move that the council concur in the committee of the whole committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Person, the council concur with the committee of the whole report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nice to have it.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Corman.
Oh. No, I'm holding my report, so.
Okay.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pavoni.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report present, but I would like to acknowledge the work that the Community Services Department did during the holiday weekend, which was during Thanksgiving. They provided, you know, a meal for the seniors in the senior center, and I want to congratulate Kelly Bimmer and her staff, as well as Public Works and all their staff and volunteers and people that were there, and of course during the Rotarians that also were there helping. And we actually, on Thursday, we recognized the 26 years that Don Person, Consumer Member Person, has been organizing and coordinating and helping with this event, he and his whole family. And it is a wonderful way to not just honor, but celebrate a holiday that has so much meaning when you say thanks, helping our seniors members, providing a warm meal for them. So once again, thank you very much for, everybody was there participating, and again, it was a successful event, and Kelly Bimmer did a really, really good job.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. McErvin.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Witchy.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Person.
Can't get by me.
That's right.
Never.
Okay, the, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Is it okay? Okay, the first Finance Committee report is regarding the 2018 year-end budget amendment ordinance. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve an amendment in the 2017-2018 budget appropriations in the amount of $6,1,300, with the total amended budget to be $652,459,174 for the biennium. The committee further recommends that the ordinance regarding the 2018 year-end budget amendment be presented for first reading and adoption, and this is signed by the committee chair member.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move that the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Ms. Witchy, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nice to have it.
The second Finance Committee report is regarding 2,800 Town Homes Fee Waiver Request. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve a 100% waiver of the eligible development and mitigation fees as provided in Renton Municipal Code 412110, or 210B4 for the 2,800 Town Homes project. This project includes 11 owner-occupied fee simple townhome units located at 2,800 Northeast 12th Street and 2,801 and 2,803 Northeast 13th Street in the Sunset area. The subject property is .66 acres and located within the residential 14, R14 zoning designation. The estimated total fees requested to be waived for the 2,800 Town Homes project are estimated at $234,151, and this is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Person.
This, I think this report needs just a tad of explanation to the council. Several years ago, when we couldn't get anybody to build anything, anywheres in the city, and we were trying to spur development up in the Sunset Highlands area, the council passed this waiver program to get people to come in and build owner-occupied, and I think that's the key to it, owner-occupied housing. And this particular developer came in just before we changed the ordinance and took this provision away, and made his application and put in his building, for his building permits. So now that he is ready to start building, he obviously would like to get the waiver of fees, and in all fairness, he played the game by the rules, and we are accomplishing part of what we wanted to, or both, in a certain sense. It's a difficult piece of property to develop, and Chip and his crew have worked hard to work with the neighbors to get the parking that's necessary there, and to make it, it's a triangular piece of property that I don't know if you could get developed otherwise. So most likely, in the long term, this is a far better result than we would have liked, but I think it's necessary that we pass this waiver. So with that, I move the council concur in the Finance Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. finance committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
And Mr. Mayor, just one, I want to follow up on Ms. Perez's about the Thanksgiving Day dinner and the city employees and Rotary, and she really stated it very nicely. But there, one little key thing, that at 5:00 a.m. on Thanksgiving morning, the most awesome cooking crew in the whole wide world showed up at the Renton Senior Center, and the chief cook was Mayor Law. Actually, actually, it was, it's fun, you get tired at our ages, but the crew, crew has been doing this for so long, they just came in and everything hap, happened all at once. And everybody that came in later says, man, this is phenomenal. And it included city employees, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention George Stahl and Greg from the water department and Dean, one of our mechanics that were there. And it just, like you say, it was just an awesome experience to be doing that. And just for the public's, we are going to do it again next year. It's, we're not doing away with that program, so with that.
Thanks, Mr. Person. Okay, moving on to a little bit of legislation. Seventeen ordinances. So Megan is trying to get her voice all prepared for, she's trying to send it over to the city attorney, but he hasn't bitten that.
Okay, I have quite a few, so please have patience with me. So the first ordinance for first reading is an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, repealing and replacing Chapter 6.3 of the Renton Municipal Code, amending alarm system regulations and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I move the ordinance to be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, second by Mr. Person, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
The second ordinance for first reading is an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending the city of Renton fiscal years 2017-2018 biennial budget as adopted by ordinance number 5824 and thereafter amended by ordinance numbers 5835, 5850, 5864, 5880, and 5885 in the amount of $6,1,300.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person?
I move the ordinance to be advanced to second and final reading this evening.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Ms. Perez, that this ordinance be advanced to second and final reading this evening. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Okay, I will do a second reading of this. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending the city of Renton fiscal years 2017 through 2018 biennial budget as adopted by ordinance 5824 and thereafter amended by ordinance numbers 5835, 5850, 5864, 5880, and 5885 in the amount of $6,1,300.
Mr. Mayor, move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Ms. Perez, that this ordinance be adopted as read, requires a roll call.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Ms. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. McIrvin?
Aye.
Ms. Witche?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it.
Okay, the next ordinance for first reading is an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 48110.F and 4970.R of the Renton Municipal Code by allowing the city council to render a quasi-judicial appeal decision affirming the underlying decision without substantive review, eliminating a hearing examiner appeal when the hearing examiner is the underlying decision maker, specifying appeal paths for procedural and substantive environmental appeals, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance to be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
The next ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending sections 911.2, 911.5, and 911.7 of the Renton Municipal Code by defining the term honorary street name, establishing procedures for the assignment of honorary street names, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I move that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
The next ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending Chapter 4.4 of the Renton Municipal Code by adding Section 4.455, short-term rentals, regulating short-term rentals of a dwelling unit or portion thereof, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I move that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
The next ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending ground level details in subsection 4.3100.E.5 and adding commercial sign regulations regarding buildings located in the CD zone to subsection 4.4100.H.4.B of the Renton Municipal Code regarding downtown window transparency and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I move that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
The next ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending subsection 4.9250.B.1 of the Renton Municipal Code by adding development standards from which commercial and industrial land uses can be granted a variance, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I would like to move that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Okay, the next ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 4.145.F2, 4.610.C, 4.660.D, 4.660.J3, 4.680.K, 4.720.A, 4.720.D, 4.750.B, 4.750.C6, 4.750.D7, 4.760.E3, 4.760.F, 4.760.G, 4.760.H, 4.770.A, 4.770.H1, 4.770.J, 4.770.L, 4.770.M, 4.770.O, 4.780.E, 4.780.J, 4.780.L, 4.7110.C, 4.7130.A, 4.7200.E, and 4.960.C. Sections 4.7140 and 4.7190, and the definitions of lot line adjustment map in subsection 4.8120.D12, and short plat or binding site plan map final in subsection 4.8120.D19 of the Renton Municipal Code, streamlining, clarifying, and updating short plat and formal plat processes, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I'd like to move that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Are you going to repeat it?
I don't want to make Megan repeat it again tonight, we can save that for next week.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
The next ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 4.480.F8 and 4.480.F10 of the Renton Municipal Code, amending parking standards and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I'd like to move that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
The next ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending subsection 4.260.G, adding a definition of private club fraternal organization to section 4.11160, and amending the definitions of services off-site, services on-site, and service and social organizations in section 4.11190 of the Renton Municipal Code, amending regulations related to service and social organizations, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I would again like to move that this ordinance be, well, not again this, any ordinance, but I would like to move that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
The next ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending section 4.1220 of the Renton Municipal Code by extending and modifying the multifamily housing property tax exemption and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I would like to move that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
The next ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 4.1210.A, 4.1210.B, and 4.1210.C of the Renton Municipal Code by extending and modifying the waiver of certain development and mitigation fees, and providing for severability and affecting and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I'd like to move that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Ms. Pavoni, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Okay, we have three left for ordinances for first reading. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 5.53A of the Renton Municipal Code and adding section 4.5125 to the Renton Municipal Code to create a residential rental registration and inspection program, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Okay, come on, don't be bashful.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I'd like to move that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
I got so used to Ryan's intoxicated voice. I wanted to give someone else a chance. I was like in a trance.
Okay, the next ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, changing the zoning classification of four parcels, 7227-801315, 7227-801290, 7227-801295, 7227-801300, within the city of Renton from residential 14 dwelling units per acre, R14, to Center Village, CV, CPA 2018M01.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I move that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Okay, the last ordinance for first reading is an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, adopting the 2018 amendments to the city's 2015 comprehensive plan, maps, and data and conjunction therewith.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this final ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Okay, and there is one ordinance for second and final reading, and that is an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending subsection 4.560.E2 of the Renton Municipal Code, eliminating the exemption from permits for wireless facilities in the right-of-way, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We almost ran, we almost made it through the alphabet. I'd like to move that this ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Ms. Witche, that this ordinance be adopted as read, and this requires a roll call.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Ms. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. McIrvin?
Aye.
Ms. Witche?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it. Thank you, Megan. A lot of these will come up again next week.
Jason is doing that meeting.
Okay, moving on to new business, Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. On Monday, December 10th, 2018, at 4:30 p.m., and the conference center, the committee whole will meet, we have five items on the agenda. Tri-Park Master Plan/Narco Property, Parking at Coulon Park, Sunset Neighborhood Park Phase Two Update, Council Policies Update, and 200 Mill Update. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Corman.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Pavoni?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to announce that the Public Safety Committee meeting scheduled for Monday, December 10th, has been canceled.
Okay. Ms. Perez?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McIrvin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Planning and Development Committee will be meeting on Thursday, December 6th, at 4:00 p.m. in the council conference room. Four items on the agenda, Trails and Bicycles Master Plan, Bike Share Survey, Shoreline Master Program Periodic Review, it's only briefing, and finally, emerging issues in CED. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Witche.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Thursday, December 6th, at 3:30 p.m. in the council conference room, the Utilities Committee will be meeting.